Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the board meeting of May 15th. If you'll please stand, Mr. Bless Costi will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I'm going to stand to start this program because I understand I look like a talking table back where I'm sitting, so I'm going to just stand here a minute. If we could have a moment of silence, we lost one of our sixth graders at Kaiser, our kindergarten kids a couple of weeks ago, and if we could have a moment of silence, that'd appreciate it. His name is Kaiser Hall. Thank you. Next, we need the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of May 1st. I need a motion, please.
Support SWIT.
Supported by? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now we have nice things happening, so I can sit down and help Mr. Rice with the program.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. It's good to see you here tonight. At the beginning of some of our meetings, we have nice things happening, and tonight, obviously, we're in a special place because we are celebrating the leaders of the high school, and we're going to have the parents and students be able to feel good about things that they've been doing for a lot of their time here. I'll tell you a little bit how it's going to work. We are going to go through each one of the groups, one by one. Mr. Button's going to join me here on the stage, and as soon as I'm done talking, he'll kind of take over and introduce his people, and then you'll come up. They'll get a certificate, the students will, and then the students, when we're all said and done, after the teachers have said something about them and they've gotten their certificates, will kind of point out who they came with and introduce who they came with. So it should go smoothly. I got a lot of smiling faces, and I have to tell you, there's a lot of familiar faces here. I've been seeing a lot of you the past month, so good to see you again. And at this time, I'll have Mr. Button come up, and he will get our festivities started here.
Good evening, everybody. This is always a fun night to recognize some of the leaders of a wide variety of clubs and organizations that we have here at Roseville High School. We have a few of them that I'll be introducing tonight, but we also have a few that the club and group sponsors are here tonight, and I'd like to give them the opportunity to do their introductions first. So where I would like to start is with our LINK crew, and Ms. Houghton and Mr. Stevens, if you could join me up here.
Good evening. So LINK crew is a nationally renowned freshman transition program for our eighth graders coming into the ninth grade. Me and Ms. Houghton here coordinate that along with two others here in the building. We had some great leaders this year, and we're extremely proud of the four that we're honoring here tonight. They were our officers of the year, so we had, you know, the typical president, vice president, secretary, and treasurer. And LINK crew is special to both of us, so without further ado, here's Ms. Houghton.
Oh, hello. Hello, thank you. I'm coming from softball. I'm a softball coach this year. Just wanted to give you a heads up on the school spirit. I know Reed has a sport in the blazer. Good job, Mr. Stevens. Everyone looks so nice in the audience. We have our treasurer, Austin Barnett. If Austin would come up, he's a huge asset to LINK crew. Then we have our historian, Dallas Griggs. Hi, congratulations. Our vice president is Paris Jones Allen. And our president is Lakaya Reese. So as Mr. Stevens was saying, these are really the leaders of the leaders as far as pushing forward a lot of the activities that we do with LINK crew, from the tailgate at the beginning of the school year to the ice cream social for the ninth graders at the end of the year. And really, they are the voice of their generation, and they speak to us, and we try to do whatever we can to support them. And we really are very proud of you, and you're our shining stars. So thank you guys so much, and congratulations.
My name is Dallas Griggs. I'm with my stepdad, my sister, and my brother. I'm in 11th grade. And is that it?
My name's Austin Barnett, and I'm here with my parents and my sister.
My name is Lakaya Reese. I'm a senior this year, and I'm here with my mom and my niece.
Okay, let's give one last round of applause for our LINK crew. Next, if I could have Mrs. Drewan join me on the stage. And Mrs. Drewan leads our journalism classes. Our journalism classes are responsible for not only our student newspaper, The Panther Prowl, but they also put together our school yearbook. And I had the pleasure last week of a copy of our school yearbook being delivered to my office to take a look at, and our students this year did a just wonderful, wonderful job putting together a yearbook for all of our students to be able to enjoy that captured the memories of this year. And Mrs. Drewan, I'd like to give you the opportunity to introduce those journalism student leaders.
First of all, as many of you know, I've been doing this for a really, really long time, and every year, gosh, I'm a speech teacher, and I have trouble up here, because I chose to honor four of my seniors who have been on this journey for a really long time, and I'm starting to get choked up, Genesis. And they're amazing, and we couldn't do what we do. We'd probably get it done, but we get it done in a really fabulous way, and they work really hard, and they'll answer my text messages at 10:00 at night when we're on deadline, and I'll be like, what is this box? Somebody fix this! And no complaints, we just get through it. And this year actually did not have the stress that we have had of other years, so I was really proud of that. And like Mr. Button just said, our yearbooks are here. We will start distributing tomorrow, so if anyone hasn't bought one yet, there'll still be a minimum. We have a few extra left that you can purchase, that we'll have out on the tables too tomorrow. So let's start. Start with my editor-in-chief. I don't see her. Paige Gwynn? She's still there? Okay. So let's just go on the list. All right, managing editor, Mackenzie Hubbard. Book would not be possible without her, and I mean that with my whole entire heart, and everyone knows it, so. Sports editor, sports slash activities editor, Genesis Reed. And then our copy chief, Matt Scazellis. So like I said, I have these four individuals, these four amazing humans that I wanted to honor tonight because they're seniors, one, and I'm going to miss them terribly. And I saw a meme, or when I got home and I was scrolling through Facebook, and it was about how teachers, we can't wait for summer to come, and then, but there's also part of it where you don't want the year to end because you have that group that you're going to miss so much. And here we go again. So, thank you, guys.
Hi, I'm Mackenzie. As she said, I'm a senior, and I'm here with my mom, my dad, and my two brothers.
I'm Genesis. I'm a senior, and there's too many people, so I've got my family, and then I have my softball teammates.
Hello, I'm Matt, and I brought my dad.
And as they're taking a seat, let's give one last round of applause to our journalism crew. Next, if I could have Mr. Burns join me on stage. Mr. Burns represents our REST club, which is our robotics and engineering club that just do some amazing, amazing things up in our robotics labs with the robots that they put together that they then take into competitions and perform very, very well with what is a very, very young team this year. So, Mr. Burns.
Yeah, hi, I'm Mr. Burns, and I'm representing the Roseville Engineering Science and Technology Club that we run after school all year long, and we do some amazing competitions, and we have some amazing students. In fact, all of these students that I'm going to talk about today are all sophomores, and they've kind of helped resurrect the team after COVID kind of decimated it. So they're a great group of leaders, and they've really taken charge. And again, they're only sophomores, but they've really stepped up to the challenge, and we're very proud of them. We have Paige Armbrister has taken the helm on our underwater IVD project, and she's done a great job running that team. Let's see, do we have Natavia in here? All right, well, Natavia is, Natavia Triska is our mini IVD project leader, and that's RC Cars for people that don't know. And we do a lot of data collection and testing before our actual competition, and she's been doing a great job helping to lead that team. Go ahead and give her a round of applause even though she's not here. And next, we have Luis Gomez Villas, and he is our programming project leader, and he has been our lead programmer for two years now. He's done some amazing things with our autonomous vehicles and programming. He's been doing a great job. We're very proud of his programming. And then we have Sumner Hull. Who's not with us today, and he is our autonomous IVD project leader, and our autonomous IVD is a, it's a power wheel, if you guys remember that from your childhood. We take one of those power wheels and we set it up with some electronics and motors, and we drive it around. And he's been doing a great job working with that project to get it done. We're competing with that tomorrow. And last, we have Colton Masterson. Not here, he's probably at baseball. And he was our first mechanical project leader. He's been doing a great job putting together our robots and stepping up to basically be our tool man. And then again, we're very proud of our leaders, and they've really stepped up to fill the void that was left by COVID, and they came in as freshmen last year, learned a whole bunch, and really stepped up this year.
Hi, my name is Luis Gomez, and I'm here with my dad, my mom, my two brothers, and my sister.
Hi, my name is Paige Armbrister, and I'm here with my mom and dad.
All right, let's give one last round of applause for our REST club. Like Mr. Burns said, it's exciting to see we have a very sophomore-heavy organization with a lot of leadership in it that bodes very, very well for things to come over the next couple of years with what these students are already engaged in and producing. The next organization I would like to recognize is our Student Assembly. So if Ms. Colius could join me up here. And Student Assembly is really a driving force here at Roseville High School. They organize our homecoming parade, our homecoming dance, our pep assemblies. They are in the thick of things right now as we prepare for Senior Week next week and prom coming up next week with prom sale tickets and all that goes in with just being ready for prom. It's a very, very ambitious group of student leaders that Ms. Colius, as the senior sponsor for Student Assembly, will introduce to you.
Thank you. Can I go ahead and, before I say anything, I'll go ahead and bring up our junior class officers, our senior class officers, and student assembly officers, if you want to come up and join me right now. And I'll introduce them each individually, don't worry. So as Mr. Button said, we're really in the thick of things right now. It's a little overwhelming, so we have prom tickets and prom next week. We have Senior Week next week. We had blood drive just a couple of weeks ago, so spring is a really busy time for us. So I'll start at the end. Who are going to be busy organizing our mock, senior mock awards and barbecue and all of that for Senior Week next week, which are Devon Newsome and Lakaya Most. They are senior class president and vice president. They're awesome. They've really, they're really quietly organized, and I love that, and just kind of taken over and stepped into these new roles, and you've just done great, and we're going to have a busy week coming up. So thank you for all your hard work. And similarly, a busy week coming up, our junior class president and vice president, Zion Davis, and Dallas Griggs. So the junior class organizes the theme and sets up prom, decorates for prom, stays at prom, takes down for prom, so they are really busy. And the junior class in general, and led by these two officers, are doing a great job, and we're really excited about prom coming up next week. And last but not least, are our student assembly officers. We have our president, Zach Osorio, vice president, Austin Barnett, and our secretary, Kaitlyn Miller. So these guys have the lovely opportunity to work very closely with me to run each and every meeting that we have for Student Assembly through the year. I don't know if they see that as a blessing or a curse, but that is something they get to do. They run the meetings. Like, we talk about what we're going to talk about, but they generally, it's been really easy because they make the agenda, they run the meeting, they hold themselves and others accountable, and they've just made my life so much easier by the way they run things. And these three have been in Student Assembly all three or four years, each of you, and so like, I've watched them from their freshman to their senior year, and it's really, it's going to be hard to say goodbye to them, for sure, but I'm so proud of everything all of these leaders have done this year and also the years in the past. Kaitlyn Miller, as our Student Assembly secretary, she's also our Red Cross blood drive chairperson, so she'll be getting a scholarship from the Red Cross this year, and she runs it so smoothly. Our co-chair has a lot, has really big shoes to fill. She's been just awesome. But I love this group so much, and I appreciate everything that you guys have done all four years and this year in particular, so thank you.
Hi, I'm Zach Arias, or just Zach, and I'm in 12th grade. Today, I'm here with my mom, stepdad, and grandma.
Again, Austin Barnett with my parents and my sister.
Hi, I'm Kaitlyn. I'm here with my parents.
Hi, I'm Dallas. I'm here with my stepdad, sister, and brother.
Hi, I'm Zion, and I'm here with my parents, my brother.
Hi, I'm Devon, and I'm here with my dad, my mom, and my niece.
Hi, I'm Lakaya, and I'm here with my parents.
All right, let's give one last round of applause as they exit the stage to our Student Assembly. Next, I'm going to take over some introductions from here because we had some staff members that could not make it here tonight. And I want to start with our Quiz Bowl. Our Quiz Bowl is a competitive organization. It is run by Mr. King. They compete around the county, and very much if you think of Jeopardy and a Jeopardy-style game, that is what our Quiz Bowl team does and engages in. If you ever poke your head in one of Mr. King's Quiz Bowl practices, they can be pretty spirited. They can be an awful lot of fun. And Mr. King wanted to recognize tonight his Quiz Bowl captain, Jordan Hebert, and I don't believe Jordan could make it here tonight. Is that correct, Jordan? You're not in the audience, correct? Okay. But Jordan could not make it here tonight, but he does serve as the captain of our Quiz Bowl team, and in recognizing all of our high school leaders, we wanted to make sure that we did recognize Jordan tonight. So let's, even though he's not here, he might see the video. Let's give Jordan a big round of applause. Next, I'd like to recognize our various section leaders from our band. If all of our band students could, our section leaders could make their way up here. Mr. Cheshire is unable to be here tonight, but he speaks very, very highly of his band section leaders. They do a tremendous amount to keep band and keep class and keep the performances moving forward. It's a well-oiled machine at any point in the day if you walk down to this part of the building and see what Mr. Cheshire has happening with his band classes, with his band students. And his band students have enjoyed a number of accolades this year in their performances at district festivals. Mr. Cheshire had, for the first time in his career, students that qualified for the Michigan All-State Band. Some tremendous things that happened, especially coming out of COVID, when you think of what band, especially if you have a band student with you, if you think of what band was like during virtual learning and during concurrent learning, and how very, very different it was to see some of the great honors that we have had coming out of our band program this year. It's just incredible to see, speaks volumes to what's happening in Mr. Cheshire's classroom, speaks volumes to the work and the leadership his section leaders are showing to make these things happen. So what we will do since Mr. Cheshire is not here, I will just pass the microphone down. I'll let everyone introduce themselves, and at the same time, they can introduce who they came here with.
I'm Jessica. I'm in 11th grade, and I came here with my mom, my dad, and my brother.
My name is Isaiah, and I'm a senior, and I came here with my mom.
I'm Kaylee Nagorny, and I'm a senior, and I'm also field commander of the band, and I came with my mom.
I'm Dan DePaolansad. I'm a trumpet section leader. I'm also a sophomore. I'm with my parents, my three sisters, and my brother Fred.
Hi, I'm Kaitlyn. I'm the drum major, and I came here with my parents.
I'm Jessica. I was the low section leader, and I came here with my parents, my brother, my sister, and my aunt.
Thank you very much, and congratulations on those honors. Let's give one last round of applause for our band section leaders. And as they return to their seats, if I could have the section leaders from our symphonic choir join me on stage. And like our band section leaders, Ms. Mead and our choir section leaders, she relies heavily on, both in the classroom and at performances, to keep the choir moving forward, to keep the choir engaged, to keep the choir performing at a high level. We've always had a beautiful choir here, a beautiful sounding choir at Roseville High School, but if you've had the chance to listen to our choir performances this year, see any of our choir performances, I do have to say, the performances that we are getting out of our choirs this year are some of the best that we've probably ever had, and that speaks volumes to the leadership our section leaders show, speaks volumes to the work that Ms. Mead is doing with them. Funny story, Ms. Mead, this is her first year here with us, and early in the school year in September, I was walking past Ms. Mead's classroom after school, and I hear this opera music playing, and I thought, oh, she's got some opera music playing in there. And I opened the door just to poke my head in to check on Ms. Mead and see how she's doing, and no, it was Ms. Mead who was doing the opera singing. Ms. Mead herself actually performs with the Detroit Symphony Orchestra, or Detroit Opera, I should say, and has used those connections to bring connections into her classroom, to really push and motivate our choir students, to push and motivate our section leaders to lead the choir, and they just sound absolutely fabulous this year. So I will let our symphonic choir section leaders introduce themselves and what section of the choir that they do lead and who they are here with.
I'm Paige Tamala. I'm a senior, and I'm one of the student directors as well as the alto section leader. And I played Morticia in the musical, but yeah, that was cool. I came with my mom and my stepdad.
Hi, I'm Devon again, and I'm with my mom, dad, and my niece, and I was tenor section leader, also co-senior student director, and I was also malbani key in the play.
Hi, okay, my name is Fred, my name is Fred DePaolansad. I am the bass section leader. I also participated in MSVMA, right, the choir thing? Yeah. So long story short, I participated in states and got two points away from a perfect score, so I'm very proud of myself. And so I came here with my mom, my dad, my three sisters, and then my younger brother.
Hi, I'm Haley. I'm not one of the section leaders, but I am a secretary of the symphonic choir, and I'm here with my two best friend's family.
Thank you very much, and one last round of applause for our section leaders for our symphonic choir. And next, if I could have our officers from our National Honor Society join me on stage. National Honor Society is probably one of the most difficult organizations to not only be accepted to, but to remain a part of at Roseville High School, because the initial offer to even join National Honor Society is based on a student's grade point average, but that does not automatically place them in our National Honor Society. There is an application process that they have to go through where they complete an application, they're writing a personal statement, they have to secure letters of recommendation from their teachers, and then when they are in National Honor Society, they also have to maintain that academic status. They have to participate in community service hours and be getting a certain number of community service hours by each, by certain points of the year to remain. So like I said, it is probably one of the most difficult organizations at Roseville High School to get in, to stay in. It's quite an honor to be a member of our National Honor Society, and I would like to just introduce our officers to you. Our sponsors, Mr. Check and Ms. Jordan, could not make it here tonight. They're busy gearing up for awards night that we have on Wednesday, but I'll turn it over to our officers to introduce themselves again for some of them. But what their officer role is in National Honor Society, which could be a little different in some of the previous introductions, in some of the previous introductions, and they can again introduce who they're here with.
Austin Barnett, I'm the vice president and I'm here with my parents and my sister.
I'm Kaitlyn. I'm the president and I am here with my parents.
I'm new up here. I'm Nathan Donaldson. I'm a senior and I'm the secretary of National Honor Society and I brought my mom and my
Thank you. Let's give one last round of applause for our National Honor Society officers. The final group I'm going to honor tonight is the Roseville High School Class of 2023 Top Ten. This is a group that in a little less than a month from now at Bethesda will be joining me on the stage. But this is really the only occasion where we'll be bringing them across the stage, announcing them right now. We don't individually announce their names as they come onto the stage at Bethesda. Well, we will announce their names when they get their diploma. And so it's a special honor to be able to present the Class of 2023 Top Ten to all of you, to the Board of Education tonight. And how I would like to do this is I will call up the members of the Class of 2023 Top Ten. I know some of them couldn't make it here tonight. I'll do it in alphabetical order, concluding with our salutatorian and then our valedictorians. And once I call your name, I'm going to ask if you come up on stage. We can applaud each one of those individuals. And when you come up on stage and get your certificate, if you could just sort of move down to this side of the stage, but stay on stage so that when the entire top 10 is here, we can applaud and recognize all of them. So it's my honor to present to you the Class of 2023 Top Ten. Navea Durksen. Julia Fetti. Drew Ann Wyden. The Class of 2023 Salutatorian, Paige Tamala. And in a very rare occurrence, Roseville High School is very honored and very proud that this, to have this year co-valedictorians. When we calculated out those GPAs all the way down to the thousandth, as far as we were able to calculate them out, we ended up with co-valedictorians. So it's my pleasure to introduce to you our co-valedictorians, Austin Barnett and Lakaiya I'll turn the microphone over to them to allow them to again introduce themselves and who they are here with.
Hi, I'm Lakaiya Reese. I'm a senior and I came with my mom and my niece.
Austin with his parents and his sister.
I'm Paige and I'm with my mom and my stepdad.
I'm Drew Ann and I'm here with my dad, my mom, my sister and my little brother.
I'm Edward. I'm here with my mom, dad, aunt and my brother.
I'm Jessica and I'm here with my parents, my brother, my sister and my aunt.
I'm Kaitlyn and I'm here with my parents.
I'm Sidney. I'm here with my mom, my grandma Sandy and my two best friends.
Before they sit down, these, some of these students were our student school board co-partners during the day and they followed us around and they ran our board meeting at night and they did a very, very good job. We had one practice and they went through it perfectly. The only problem was at the end of the evening, they were leaving and Austin happened to be taking my place as president, I could see him playing with my gavel and I'm looking and I said, you're not planning on taking that, are you? He goes, no, I just wanted to just to feel it. I bought your own gavel. And I'm sure someday it'll be a, someday I'm sure it'll be a larger one. You'll be, thanks and congratulations.
All right, while these, while this top 10 will join me in leading the procession of our graduates out across the, are out to the stage and to our seats at Bethesda, before we get to that point, let's give them one last big round of applause as the top 10
Before we end this meeting, we're going to give you a five-minute recess, but we're going to talk to the board and see if any board members have anything they want to say. Sayudo.
Just well done, everyone. Congratulations and thank you for all the hard work that you put in and thank you to all the parents for supporting all the students.
Great job, everyone. A special thanks always to our staff leaders. Many of these groups would not exist without you and all of you students should be really proud of these staff leaders. They're doing a fantastic job and some of you, year after year after year, so good job. I just want to congratulate everyone tonight. You did a fantastic job. We're so proud of you. This is a very good night to be on the Board of Education, to see all these great things happening. And to all the parents, I salute you. You did a good job with the kids. Also, I attended a meeting Friday night where Dave was recognized at the meeting for some things he accomplished. Dave, I just wanted to say you did a great job.
Hey, let's hear for Dave.
And I have one last thing. I was at the high school this past week for the band concert. You guys do a great job. Keep up the good work and to the staff that takes care of all these kids and teaches them and trains them, you did a great job. First of all, Kaitlyn, are you still here? Where's Kaitlyn Miller? I want to apologize for canceling school on the day we were supposed to do in the blood drive and then she had to regroup and do a makeup day. So I made sure I made the makeup day, so. Also, I'd like to congratulate the high school band on their concert the other day. I can't tell you how excited I was to hear the Mandalorian theme song. I was all into that and I wanted to record it, but I got so excited, I forgot to hit record. But I'll have to watch it from the YouTube, but it was wonderful. It was a great job. Also, the trumpet players in the band, amazing, amazing. And then you decide to do a Louis Armstrong song like Glutton for Punishment, but it was excellent. We appreciate your tenacity to get that done. Also, again, thank you, parents, for being there for your kids and making sure that they can get to the places they need to be to be successful. You are their rock. You're their first teacher. So thank you much for doing that. And then the staff, again, as has been mentioned before, all of the efforts that are above and beyond what you do in your regular classroom and day to make these kids so talented is amazing. So thank you for all the dedication that you put into that. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Kevin?
Echoing as the other board members, first off, staff members, thank you for caring and you know, continuing with these programs. Students, parents, thank you again for your participation. Teresa, myself, Michelle and Dave had the opportunity a couple of weeks ago to attend the first joint band choir award ceremony and that's been a tradition of Teresa and our, myself for a couple of years. And that was, you know, once again, a great, great event and
It was fun.
Fun event and especially with it being a dual role. So thank you, everybody, for doing that and continue doing what you're doing.
And of course I have the same to say. Thank you, everybody, for all that you do. Staff, students, congratulations. It's just fantastic to see all of this. And I would like to say happy belated Mother's Day to all the mothers and the mother figures because some people haven't had kids, but they take care of kids just as though they were their mothers. So thank you, thank you all for everything that you do.
As has been said, you shall all be very proud, staff, parents and students. Staffs for your support and leadership, parents for your support and guidance and students for all your hard work.
So just to repeat what everyone else has said already, but congratulations to all you students for your hard work. Parents, you've done a great job. And staff, thank you for continuing to do the work you do each year.
Same thing.
Mr. Rice?
Just congratulations to everybody. Remember, you know, this is, this is a lot of effort that went in by teachers, by students, by parents. It's not the, it's not the end of a great thing. It's the start of a lifetime of great things. So keep up the great work and we hope to see you out there in the near future.
Thank you. We're looking forward to graduation with you kids. You guys have been a riot all year. We've had so much fun. We've got, it's nice that we get an opportunity to meet some of you personally and it was really great. We're looking, we hope that all you will be at graduation and come back and see us. We like to see what you're doing after you graduate. Freddie Watt?
Oh, so really quick, just want to let you guys know, the choir next week, seriously, has a spring concert and we have the middle school. Yeah.
All right. Thanks, Freddie. You're a character, I'll tell you. You have really been something. This is the first public hearing of the evening for questions and comments related to items on tonight's agenda and the second public hearing will be for general questions or comments. If anybody has anything to say that they'd like to come to the podium and say, you're welcome to, do so. If not, we're going to take a five-minute recess, so I know you guys can run and go home and do your homework and we'll let you go. Thanks, everybody, for coming. We appreciate it.